You're watching GCTV, Community Access Table Channel 15 in Greenfield, Massachusetts.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Greenfield City Council, September 18, 2019, 197th Regular Meeting, 7:00 PM. Thank you. Johnson Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street, Greenfield. This meeting is being recorded, videotaped, and broadcasted. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. Someone? Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Madam Clerk, could we have the roll call of members?
Counselor Son?
Here.
Counselor Burson?
Here.
Counselor Alice?
Present.
Counselor Pytham?
Here.
Counselor Dolan?
Here.
Counselor Gilmore?
Here.
Counselor Wheeler?
I'm here.
Counselor Mayo?
Here.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Here.
Counselor Mass?
Here.
President Renaud is absent. Vice President Ricketts?
Present.
Counselor Stempel is also absent. Madam Vice President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. This next part is voluntary. Could we please stand, pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What? Okay, there is no approval of minutes. We'll begin with communication from the Superintendent of Schools and School Committee.
Good evening, councilors. The school committee chair could not join me tonight, but she asks me to share some comments with you. I'll start with some upcoming dates. I know you have a full agenda as always, so I always like to keep my remarks brief, but I do want to make you aware of some upcoming events at our schools. We do have open houses at our elementary schools on October 2nd, followed by open houses at our middle and high school on October 3rd. If you are at our open house on October 3rd, please stay for the documentary "Like." We will be serving free pizza and popcorn at 7:00 PM, but please do not bring your pizza into the auditorium where the movie will be screening. It is free. On October 14th, we have no school. It is Columbus Day. October 18th, the Greenfield High School is hosting their popular book-to-movie club, "Five Feet Apart," is the next film. And we have the Harvest Sampler that night as well at Four Corners. On October 24th and 25th are early release days. I did want to let you know that we are beginning the Second Chances Breakfast Program at Greenfield High School. This is a grant-funded initiative. We have as many as 150 students participating daily in this program, which allows students to eat breakfast sort of à la carte after the second period in the morning. We find that a lot of students take advantage of this program, even if they have already eaten high school breakfast earlier in the day, and some, of course, are not hungry because they get to school early, and then they take advantage of the fresh nutrition later in the morning. Our high sc... I'm sorry, our school committee chair says to please let you know that the work of the school committee is at this time focused on the budget, policy, and negotiations, including Unit A and Unit C. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
We'll begin with Counselor Mass.
Thank you, Superintendent. At last month's meeting, you asked us if the future of Green River School, what was going to be in there, was an issue for us that, please table the vote on the school heating system, and you'd get us an answer. We did table it. Do you know, would you be prepared to answer that tonight, or should we hold off again?
Please hold again. The school committee has not yet taken up this matter.
Are there questions from any other councillor? Okay. Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank the council for your deliberation, and good luck with your night ahead of you.
Communications from the mayor, city officers, employees.
Good evening, Madam President and councilors. I'll be brief. As we can see, we have a large agenda and many comments ahead of us. I want to report that we've completed our financial review by Standard &amp; Poor's and Moody's. Both reaffirmed our credit ratings. Standard &amp; Poor's is AA- minus, which is fourth from the highest, and that maintained our status. Moody's gave us A1, which is maintaining our status, but that is the highest rating. We have also clarified all the numbers that we've been discussing for the past several months. It is posted on the website, the explanation and comments from S&amp;P and Moody's, as well as the debt chart, debt information, and any other relevant financial information. Quickly, we have received a grant for the Police Department roof HVAC for a little over $125,000. That's from Department of Energy Resources. We've used that application, which we have never received a rejection from DOER since we became a green community. Right now, we're hovering a little over $780,000 in grants from that designation. We had the public safety complex under discussion for several months. When the council didn't want to move with that first option, we moved into the second option, which is to use our own land on Riddell Street. That's still in process, and we're waiting votes. The grant for the Police Department then became a higher priority because we had to repair some HVAC in that building, so that's why we applied for the Police Department DOER grant. So we were successful, and unless Liz has some further comment, I'll take any questions.
Okay, I'll start with Counselor Mayo.
Mr. Mayor, I know one of the other areas at the Police Department was the booking area, is that it didn't fit their needs. Is there any suggestion or work being done in the future on that?
Yeah, I don't have a precise answer for you right now. We have a number of issues in several buildings. The two buildings left for really working with ADA access and other accessibility and civil rights submissions that we have to work on include the Police Department, but the main one, of course, is the library. And we do have a meeting coming up, I believe it's next, I believe it's tomorrow at 10:00 AM with the design engineer to go through the library property.
Thank you.
Any other councillors have any questions for the mayor? I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Communication from John Lunt for GSET?
Good evening, councillors. I see there's a busy agenda, so I'll try to be brief. Since we last spoke, GSET has passed, I want to address two things, actually, if I can step back customers and our current situation, and build out plans. Since we last spoke, GSET has passed 1,200 customers. We will hit almost 90,000 in revenues this month. That's 24 months in a row of revenue growth. We're actually up year-to-date so far in the fiscal year, over 8% month-over-month in terms of growth. That's mostly driven by TV. TV's been very successful. We have over 230 TV customers signed up, both brand-new for both TV and Internet, and also people who have upgraded from Internet to the combo package. That's led to a lot more people signing up in general. Actually, sign-ups per month are up about 36%, and the ARPU, or the average revenue per user, is also up about 24%. So at the moment, we're growing fairly quickly. We have plenty of room left to grow because we're only at 33% market penetration in the areas that we cover, and it seems, at least at the moment, that the products we're offering are pretty popular, so we feel good about that. We have heard that people would like to know, when are we going to be expanding out beyond the core? We actually have a little bit, in that we're active out at the Thayer Road, Homestead Drive area out near GCC, and we're active in East Greenfield. And we have just finished setting out the additional build-out areas that we'll be pursuing this fall. We've actually already started. We're doing the engineering and survey work necessary. And in the north of town, we'll be going up Leyden Road and Burniston Road. We'll go bit-by-bit up, so we'll start, for example, in Burniston Road, in the Overland and Burnham area, that whole neighborhood, Lilian, Knapp, streets like that, Lakeview. And in the south, on Leyden Road, we will go up Leyden Road but also head down Pickett. And the way our network is built, you can do it sequentially as you go up, and that's the plan we'll follow. In the south, we will be building down Deerfield Street out to Meridian and Washington and Mill Street, and we will move on from there. That's plenty to keep us busy for the fall. And you will see, for a little while, you probably will only see a truck out surveying, but then we will start, there's lots of paperwork to do, but then we'll start a little bit later this fall on that expansion.
Do any councillors have a question? I'll begin with Counselor Mayo.
It's not really, well, maybe it's a question. I know I run into areas of weakness where my Wi-Fi signal, whether it's on my phone or my iPad or wherever I am in town, it basically fluctuates and does not give me a connection. And that could, again, that could be whether I'm at home or somewhere in town, walking, and I just wanted to know if you had run into that problem, and what, is that a mechanical issue, or what type of issue is that?
Well, that would be two different issues. Generally, in town, we still do have the Greenlight Pilot Program working on Main Street. That isn't something that we actively support at the moment, and that really just has to do with Wi-Fi in a public area. There are some areas where Wi-Fi is always stronger than others in an outdoor setting. In your home, if you're having any areas where you're having weakness, just call us, and we will come out and figure out what's going on and fix it for you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Counselor Dolan, then Counselor Mass, then Counselor Alice.
I was just curious, have we gotten to a point with GSET where it's kind of paying its own bills? And if not, then when do you anticipate that break-even point coming?
Well, we had said about 1,400, and we're getting pretty close, yeah. We're still not totally there yet. This is the year that we begin paying off the principal part of the bond that was taken out, so the bar has gone up. But again, we've been growing really strongly, and I do anticipate that this year we will.
Counselor Mass, you had the same question? Okay. So Counselor Alice, I believe you're up.
There goes. So I just, I have a twofold question. The first one is, we had a resolution put before us about 5G technology in town. I don't know if that resolution affects you. I'm not sure if your technology is 5G. But if it is, and you don't have to answer tonight if you don't have the answer, but have you read that resolution, and will it have any effect on GSET if, in fact, you use that technology?
Right. I have read that and other resolutions about 5G. We actually don't, we use Wi-Fi that is in the 5 GHz band. That's not at all the same thing as 5G wireless technology, which is a telecommunications, meaning primarily for your phone, technology, so it really doesn't affect us.
Thank you. That was, that was one of my questions, and the other one was already asked, so thank you.
Okay. Any other councillors? Well, I'd like to ask you, in the wintertime, will you continue branching out, or will it basically stop again until spring?
It depends on the weather. It's hard to splice fiber optic cable when it's really cold, so we can for a while, but there will be a period in the middle of winter where it's just too cold to do much other than maintenance work. So we'll go for as long as we can, and then we'll start up anytime it gets warm enough for us to do it.
Okay. And to light up Main Street, would that need to be done by the businesses that are there?
So initially, Main Street was covered by fiber that ran in a conduit underneath. Unfortunately, that conduit is so overloaded that there were aspects of the fiber that got damaged. So we're actually working with a number of different people on Main Street to find alternate ways. We're not quite ready to talk about that yet, but we will be soon, to find ways to bring fiber to buildings or to bring it into the basement for an MDU solutions in buildings. It will be another month or so before we're ready to talk about it, but we don't think we can use that conduit because it's just too full, so we're finding a different solution.
Okay, thank you. And just for the general public, is your map pretty current, like as you light up, you know, how people can go out and put their address, or they check to see where you're building out? That's updated, like weekly or monthly, right?
Yeah, it's actually tied directly into our system, so when something lights up, it lights up on the map.
Thank you.
It's very current, yeah.
It was a little bit of shameless plugging on my part, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. And Counselor Pytham?
Hi, Don. Can you tell me again, the revenue that you just mentioned earlier, is that 90,000 for the month?
It will be, it might be 89. It's within, we're not to the end of the month yet. We're annuali... If you annualize that out, we're somewhere in between a million and a million-one annually. It's a subscriber business, which is why, one of the reasons why we're able to just keep growing it month after month. For us, the big thing is, we've had a really big increase in subscribers since we started with the TV. We actually signed up 74 people last month, which was a record for us.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And we should get to just about 70 this month, and I think it's really brought up a new customer to us, and I think it'll really help us going forward.
Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
So at this time, we're going to do public comment. It's going to be two minutes. So in order to get your really full two minutes, let's try not to applaud, okay? Let everyone speak, and so we can keep moving, so we can get everyone in, all right? And we will start, it'll be Greenfield residents first, okay?
And then we have one person under public hearing, but that's not right now.
Okay. We'll begin with Terry Ruggles. I don't know if you started the clock.
I will. They start when they start speaking.
All right. Mr. Ruggles.
Thank you for this opportunity. I was asked to be here by President... Yes, how's that, better? Okay. I was asked to be here tonight to clarify a position from the last meeting where I spoke, and people felt that I had perhaps reversed a position on behalf of myself and perhaps the historical commission on the Wiley-Russell Dam. That is not the case. We are fully in favor of keeping the dam. We are fully in favor of using the $1,250,000, which is, has been appropriated, in order to clean up the, both the abutments of the dam. The dam itself does not need repair. The abutments do, and the sluiceways do. We are turning, hopefully turning this into a positive, because you've all heard the historic situation, and the positive would be to start doing Urban Rivers Two. This was done a number of years ago, and this is our opportunity, picking the fruit that's hanging out there, the $1,200,000, in order to make those repairs, turn that area into a scenic area, and start the revival of the river as it runs through town. It's a perfect opportunity to do that. It does not require taking down the dam, which we're absolutely against, and there's no telling what has built up behind that dam that could cause problems if it were released. The dam is in good condition. It is the abutments and the sluiceways that need repair, basically based on deferred maintenance over the last many decades. And that money is there. We absolutely urge that that money be used for that, and be used to start the Riverway Project, which many of you have seen, which was done a number of years ago. That is our position, and that is where we remain. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. And again, I remind everyone, when you come to the microphone, make sure it's green, speak into it, and give it name and address, and if you're not from Greenfield, I will call on you at the end.
Nine Long Avenue, Greenfield.
Reverend Timothy?
Campoli.
Campoli.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here because I was appalled at the town council's support of safe abortions, safely killing our unborn children. I don't believe in this, and I, when I think of Greenfield, I think of the wonderful things that has happened in this town, and many of them because of the town council, their hard work and so forth. And I know that many of our churches support things that promote life, alternatives. We give food out to people every single week, bags of groceries. We provide as much as we can support for those who are homeless, and we provide community meals and so forth, everything to support life. And I really think that this is going to send the wrong message about our beautiful town, that we don't want to be known as a pro-death town, and that's exactly what will be happening if we vote and if we support this whole effort. And we have to remember also, it's a slippery slope, because any one of us in this room, yourselves included, someday you may be in a nursing home, and that's when the slippery slope says, they're no longer able to support themselves, it's costing us a lot of money, so we'll just give them a shot. And is that what you, how would you would like to end your life? And so I think it's very important that all of us support life from the very moment of conception until our natural deaths. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate Driscoll?
Hi, I'm 1023 Burniston Road in Greenfield. Good evening. I appreciate this opportunity to come before you and speak about this important issue. I am the former director of Alternatives Pregnancy Center in Greenfield. We are a pro-woman agency who helps women find nonviolent solutions to her unplanned pregnancy. I've come here to state most emphatically that we actually need laws protecting women from abortion. I have met with too many women who felt deeply conflicted about having an abortion, but they felt ironically that they had no choice but to terminate a pregnancy. These women faced incredible pressure to abort. They often faced fears that a boss would frown upon the pregnancy, causing her loss of promotion or position. Students face a level of discrimination on college campuses. How is it that women on college campuses who are pregnant should face discrimination in this day and age, but they actually do? And so we have answered discrimination with abortion, and how does this realistically serve our women? But we have come to the point where it's not so much her right, but she has transitioned to a sense of responsibility. This is so sad that a mother must be pitted against her child. How inherently anti-woman that mothers must destroy their own children to get ahead, get the job, get the education. We are not progressive in this. It is not good health care. It is up to governments, little governments and big governments, to acknowledge the unborn child is human and deserves protections. Once pregnant, a woman has already begun her journey of motherhood. There is a new life of innocence inside of her to be considered. I encourage this council to reject this resolution and find ways to support women in unplanned pregnancies that do not inflict violence upon her and her unborn child, because peace begins in the womb.
Jay Pelk?
Hello? Okay. My name's Joy Pelk. I live on 701 Country Club Road, Greenfield. The resolution to make Greenfield safe for abortion, we really need to make Greenfield safe for unborn babies and mothers. Abortion is not real medicine. It stops the body from doing what nature intended. It's the opposite of medicine because it harms women. Any other product that's had such massive side effects as abortion would be taken off the market. Abortion, they say, abortion, if we don't have abortion, we'll return to back alley, which is what we currently have on regulated clinics. Some of the major side effects are uterine perforation, cervical lacerations. Future pregnancies, women suffer from placenta previa ectopic pregnancies. There are high rates of depression, suicidal tendencies, increased drinking, drug abuse, and high-risk sex. The current practice of abortion meets none of these criteria. It's bad medicine, or more accurately, it's not medicine. Women choosing to have are not patients because pregnancy is not an illness. Their choice is not an indication for treatment. This distress is not a disease. In some states, abortion is legal for nine months on healthy babies and mothers, and Massachusetts is moving toward this direction. Many states have stricter laws protecting pets and vet clinics. Few have laws protecting women and babies in abortion clinics. We think more highly of our pets than the children in the womb. Abortion is a dismemberment and killing of our babies in the second, third tried minister. Now, if anyone's been following the court case in San Francisco where there have been documented videos of harvesting baby parts, selling for research, as of the end of last week, an abortionist in San Francisco, under oath, had to state that she was harvesting, beating baby hearts, and providing it to Stanford University, and the whole practice is illegal, and you can follow that. As far as the Mass Department of Public Health, Bay State Franklin Medical Center had 18 abortions last year, and Pioneer Valley Women's Health, 59 on Sanderson Street. That's 77 children out of our area who are lost. If this was a shooting incident or a natural disaster, these children, these preborn babies, these children would be mourned, but not our preborn babies.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And it's Joy, not Jay, I'm sorry.
That's all right, no problem.
Pam Kelly? Pam Kelly.
Pam Kelly, 32 Spruce Street, Greenfield. I'm here to speak about the Safe City Resolution, which I understand is being considered tonight. And I'd like to start by saying that with a name like Kelly, it's pretty clear that my family was Irish and were the immigrants, not very well received, I might say, not welcomed with open arms. In one generation, joined the, what, party of the regular white people in the United States. And there's even a book called How the Irish Learned to be White. And I'm also part of the Unitarian Universalist Church, and for 17 years, we have now held films looking at how human beings other somebody. And, you know, it's not necessary, because we're basically the same. And we all have similar needs and wants. We're all human beings. And I think that attesting to the safety for the human beings in our town and village is really important, so that we know that we have a safe place to be. I hope you'll pass it. I hope you will consider, again, the Safe City thing. Thanks.
Quirky Miller.
I'm Quirky Miller. I live on Highland Avenue, and I'm here to speak in favor of keeping the overlay district. I think, and having to vote for it, I feel like it was tied to the library unnecessarily. And I think that as long as we're going to vote on the library, I think we should vote on that. I'm, you know, if we lose, we lose. That's a whole vote in Greenfield. It's not just the council. Thank you.
Marlon Clayton.
Marlon Clayton, Peabody Lane. I'm here to ask the city council to put the French King zoning question on the November ballot. The change was voted in, by the council in March, and was made to be connected to the library vote, a quid pro quo, a compromise, a deal, to get the nay votes on the library to yea votes. Now the library is in question, and it is on the ballot. The voters will decide, which is a good thing. The compromise, in my view, is null. If the zoning question doesn't go on the ballot, the city council's March vote to change zoning, to go against the planning board's vote, is in bad faith. It's only right, fair, ethical, that it be put on the November ballot to let the voters decide. This is democracy. Finally, if the council believes that their March vote represents the will of the people, then they should have no problem in putting it on the November ballot. You will be affirmed. If you have questions about whether it does really represent the will of the people of Greenfield, then it should definitely go on the November ballot. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Al Norman. Pass out from Al Norman, if you could pass it down.
Council members, this, good evening. My name is Al Norman.
Excuse me, one second.
Madam Vice President, it appears that paperwork's being distributed, and my understanding is our rules of procedure require all materials to be presented to the clerk's office five days before the meeting. Is that correct?
Okay, that is correct. People are allowed to pass things out. I believe we saw things passed out many times before, but you will know, Mr. Norman, that maybe we don't have time to read it tonight, but thank you for this. Is this something that you emailed us?
This is my presentation tonight, so you can follow along. Standard procedure, for example, at the state legislature.
Sorry.
Please don't start my time on that. That's not what I'm here to talk about?
Start now. Nope. Okay, we'll start now.
Okay. Members of the council, six months ago, you voted to kill the French King district in order to save the library, but now the library is on the ballot, but the other half of the deal, the French King, is not. 162 acres of land on the northern edge of town was opened up to gas stations and other low-wage land uses. No zoning or environmental economic data has been presented to show any value economically to taxpayers of creating more strip retail. Protections that were put in place by our town council 26 years ago were removed in a rushed timetable in a matter of two or three weeks. Our planning board voted four to one to oppose killing the overlay zone. Landowners representing more than 20% of the affected land area asked you not to kill the French King overlay. It will cost taxpayers nothing to vote tonight, for you to vote tonight, to put the French King on the November ballot. I asked the council in April, July, and August to put the French King on the ballot. Now we are running out of time. You say you represent all the people of Greenfield. What excuse can you possibly have for not allowing your constituents to tell you what they want to do on the French King? In 48 days, we have the library ballot. Fairness says the French King zone should also be on the ballot. The purest form of local democracy is letting each voter have a voice in a city where 70% of the voters did not even turn out at this month's primaries. I would suggest that we need to do everything we can to increase voter interest and turnout on November 5th. So I urge you, put the French King zone on the ballot, and I also ask you to ask the mayor if he's going to veto this, and that he do so immediately, so that you have enough time to override his veto and get this to the clerk on the ballot.
Thank you. Winston LaBelle. Is it green?
Yeah, okay. I'm Winston LaBelle. I live in Greenfield for over 50 years. We've had our good times and bad times in Greenfield. Right now, we're having a terrible time in Greenfield. First of all, there's a lot of people here that went door to door to get a sanctuary, a vote on a sanctuary city. Is our mayor here? Why does he, why did he make a resolution that he, we weren't going to put it on the ballot? Anybody answer that? Nobody here knows why we can't put the Safe City onto the ballot, when there was 900 residents, more than enough to put it on there, and our mayor come in and gave executive action to kill it? Somebody got to have an answer. Who is it? You, you? Is it politics, or what is it? It's got to be something. Okay, yeah. By the way, last night on the news, in Maryland, in a sanctuary city, or a safe city, whatever you want to call it, in the suburbs, very central suburbs, there's eight undocumented people that raped six girls from 6 to 16. Do we want that in our community? I don't. I got grandchildren, and one of the rapes, they went, illegal, went into their house and got her in her bedroom. That's totally unacceptable. So I think, right now, we should have a vote up to the people, whether we want to put up with that and let our police do their jobs or not.
Thank you. Ellen Thompson.
54 High Street, Greenfield. If we continue to focus on what this council is doing, lawless and unconstitutional, we are not examining the fact that they are ignoring their oaths to obey the Constitution. That means that anything they want to do must agree with the Constitution. You folks are town councilors, many of whom are making fools of yourselves and demonstrating your unfitness and immaturity for this job. This is a republic, and you do not represent a great many of us. Safe cities, safe for abortions, impeaching, mind your own towns' business.
Greg Saint Germain.
Hi, Greg Saint Germain, 301 Chapman Street. Just basically have a list of questions people think about. Why is it okay for an openly racist, sexist person to be the council, beyond the council, let alone the president of it? Why is the council so bent on getting a new expensive library before we get a new needed, much-needed fire station? Do you have any idea what would happen legally to this town when someone gets killed or injured due to lack of proper fire station? Why is our town getting involved in national politics, when we have enough of our own local problems not getting addressed? Why are we painting parking meters in front of empty storefronts rather than trying to fill them? Why are we placing the bricks on Main Street with ugly off-colored fake bricks while half the town sidewalks are unpassable by handicapped or injured? Why isn't it public knowledge that there have been several human-travailing buses in Greenfield in the past couple of months? Alone, isn't this something the police department should be telling, alerting the public to? Why does this council of 13 individuals feel it can decide what 17,500 people feel about abortion? Why does this council feel it can decide what 17,500 people feel about President Trump's impeachment? What do you even think you can do about it, and why? There are so many more questions, but time is limited. The quick answer is Agenda 2030. These people, you people are not only anti-Greenfield, but you're anti-American. You are implementing agendas through the Continuing Political Revolution Organization, or CPR. One just needs to go to their website and see that the entire agenda has been playing out in front of us for years and is directly the reason this town has gone downhill so fast. These councils are simply not doing their jobs. They do not represent the voices of this town. One more question. What do you get when you mix human trafficking, abortions, and a sanctuary city? Thank you.
Catherine Golub. Okay, everyone, calm down. Catherine Golub.
Catherine Golub, Glen Brick Drive. I'm here speaking for a lot of people tonight, who specifically I asked not to offer lots of testimony, people who are supporting the Safe City ordinance, because I wanted to help keep this meeting as short as possible out of respect to each of you, because I know that you've all made up your minds about this issue. And you've heard lots of testimony over the last few months, including mine. Over the last couple of years, I've shared all sorts of arguments in favor of the Safe City ordinance. So today, I want to keep it short. The one thing I want to ask, to do, is to ask each of you to please do whatever you can in your power to keep the Safe City ordinance alive and help this story end well. I understand, if you wish, that we didn't have to keep talking about this issue. I really get that. But that doesn't mean that this ordinance isn't as important as ever for immigrants who live in Greenfield. And it doesn't mean that the mayor's executive order is enough. It wasn't enough two years ago. It does not make our city safe, and it leaves the implementation of this policy arbitrarily in the hands of whoever the future mayor is. So how do you help this, how will you help this story end well? I'm asking you to please, tonight, do everything in your power to keep the Safe City ordinance alive. That may look like tabling the vote to override the veto, and whatever it looks like, please, please do everything in your power to keep this ordinance alive. It's incredibly important for the immigrants in our community. And I also want to thank each of you who has the courage to vote in support of the Roe Resolution. There are just as many people in this town who would support this, but honestly, we didn't know about this tonight, so thank you.
Sandy Kosterman. Thank you.
Sandy Kosterman, Barton Road, Greenfield. I'm here because anyone who understands and opposes the Safe Sanctuary City ordinance realizes that this is not about race. It's about following the law and having immigrants come here legally so they can be vetted. The president of the city council's remarks at the last city council meeting regarding how we can go into a voting booth and vote our racist intentions were offensive and unbecoming of a city councilor. Does following the law and encouraging immigrants to come here legally make a person a racist? I think not. We are a nation of laws. If we pick and choose what laws we want to follow, it's a slippery slope to anarchy. We elected you and expect you to follow the law and uphold the oath you took when you became a city councilor. By the way, "safe city" is a feel-good term for sanctuary city, which is not making citizens in our town feel safe. Making Greenfield a safe sanctuary city would incentivize illegal immigrants to come here illegally and risk their lives, which is not helping them. Also, I am pro-life, and I believe this issue is not a city matter for you to take up. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark O'Doyle.
Mark O'Doyle, Prospect Street. I'm here to talk about putting French King on the ballot, that's it. That's all I'm talking about. And I'm going to preface this, I hold in my hands something I downloaded from the town, I'm sorry, the city website, and it has, like, election results, and it has numbers and percentages. And this number and percentage said that the city council president got X amount of votes, and it counted for 43% of the vote. And she called me out on it on the radio, so I double-checked my numbers, and I was way off. She got 59% of the vote. She got more votes than the mayor, either mayor or candidate. And I wrote her an email to apologize, but I don't think private apologies for public bad behavior is appropriate. And I'm going to apologize also for my presentation. Now, ordinary people would say, I'm not ordinarily like that. No, I'm like that all the time. I go from zero to 1,000 miles an hour, okay? But I have a little acronym, THINK, is what I'm about to say. Is it thoughtful? Is it helpful? Is it inspiring? Is it necessary? Is it kind? I was zero for five, okay? I'm sorry. I'm going to talk about French King rezoning, and I'm going to try to keep it very simple. We seem to have sort of synecdoche, is what you call it, taking one person and making him represent a whole thing. And I don't think it's about that. I'm going to take a guess about all of you. A guess that if either you've been here for a short time, or you've been here for a long time. And that guess is that there's a quality of life about Greenfield that you don't find anywhere else, and that's why you want to be here. And I posit that this issue could affect our quality of life. And it'd be nice if you put it on the ballot. And I'm sorry, everyone's going to beat you up tonight.
Thank you, Mark. Edward Cotrell.
Edward Cotrell, Creston Street. I just had a first question, which, what is the actual resolution affirming support for access to safe and legal abortion? Because it was never read out. I don't know how to discuss it to a certain extent, because that's all it says.
I'm sorry, we don't do that during public comment. You could go to the city hall tomorrow.
Well, I'll go next. The fact that it was never published, like the Safe City Ordinance was, and it spelled everything out, that we're here saying, why? Massachusetts has some of the most liberal laws protecting abortion in any state in the country. Why are we spending time worrying about affirming what already exists in this state? I don't understand that when the council can't even meet a quorum to pass the budget and to cost taxpayers $500,000. So what I ask is that the council stop wasting time on things that already exist, which is protection for abortion, legal and safe, in Massachusetts, and not spend that time here when you could actually be running our town much better. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth O'Neill?
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth O'Neill. My friends call me Liza. I live on Leyden Road, Precinct 1. As a panel of 13 members, you sit before us, making a decision affirming support for legal abortion. I find it interesting that this has come about when the so-called Roe Act, or Late Term Abortion Act, has recently come before this Massachusetts state legislature. If you are in favor of this, you don't represent me. If you think late-term abortion is okay, you don't represent me. Are you familiar with the famous words of Edmund Burke? I quote, "The only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good men to do nothing," end quote. It's always easier to do nothing in a difficult time, much easier to sit back and allow others to speak for you. But people should take the initiative, speak the truth, and cut off tragedy at the past when we see warning signs and in the end regret that we didn't say anything as we watch decisions like this erode our human society. I believe that human life must be respected and protected from the moment of conception. Who among you wants to deprive any human being respect and protection by allowing abortion to continue up to 40 weeks gestation? This is nothing short of murder. Abortion's not medical treatment. It doesn't make a baby healthier. It doesn't make a woman healthier. It just kills. I find it appalling that this panel has decided to bring this resolution forward tonight when clearly this is above your decision-making, or as they say, it's above your pay grade. This is not man's law. It's God's law. And it's very simple: thou shalt not kill. I've lived in Greenfield all my life. I have many titles: wife, mom, daughter, sister, aunt, friend, and most recently, nana. I have been blessed with wonderful children and eight grandchildren. From our youngest grandchild to my 91-year-old mother, I think I have a pretty good sense of just how precious life is.
Thank you. James Patton?
My name's James Patton. I live on Oakland Street in Greenfield. I've lived in Greenfield all my life. I love my town, and it's getting harder to love my town with some of the decisions that are being made. I come from a Catholic family. I was born Catholic, and I'm part of the Knights of Columbus. And the abortion issue, killing someone, is not what I see as the right thing to do at all. As far as there's other issues in town that should be put on the ballot, as well as what the other people have been saying ahead of me, I'm also agreement of that. And I think it's up to the public to be able to voice their opinions. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Tim Moser?
Tim Moser, 29 Cypress Street. I'm also one of those scary straight white guys, okay? And I'll tell you something. I serve this country for everybody in here, and their right to vote is probably one of the most important rights they have. To say voting is cowardice is disgusting, okay? To call white guys who have a legal right to carry firearms scary? That's their right. President Renault needs to resign, period, okay? You've got some issues tonight: safe city, abortion, President Trump. Why are you dealing with national issues? You people are paid. You're paid to represent me here in this town, in this town. You're not my representative of the state. You're not my representative of the federal government. You represent me in this town. You're chasing national issues because maybe somebody wants to see themselves as a super-social-justice warrior. You're not. You're a paid representative. You're paid by taxpayers. You're paid by not my taxes, which are going up, thank you, okay? You represent town issues. So let me give you a couple of spares, okay? Any solution to the dead homeless people freezing? Any solutions there? Have we done that? Have we fixed that? Have we given them a place to go? No? I don't know. How about the dead drug fester? We fixing that problem? Yeah, you know, somebody died at Wormtown, right? We do that two or three times a year, and eventually the numbers will rack up. How about body cams? Police got body cams yet? Haven't figured that out? It's a union issue. No resolutions there? How about heroin problem? Have you fixed that yet? Hmm? No. No. So here you are, chasing monkeys that are flying away to Washington, D.C. You see yourself as social justice warriors. You're not. Represent me here in this town.
Thank you.
Represent Al Norman. I don't care, but represent.
Phil Elmer? Okay, everybody, come on. Phil Elmer.
Phil Elmer, 28 Chestnut Hill. I'm here to talk about what you guys did six months ago to save the library. You made a compromise to get the ninth vote you needed. You did a trade-off of the library for the overlay issue. To me, it's just a matter of fairness. If you're going to put one half of the compromise on the ballot, you should put the other half. Thank you.
Thank you. Alyssa Valbona?
Alyssa Valbona, 127 Franklin Street. So I'll start by saying I'm a healthcare professional. I'm here to speak in support of the Roe Act. I understand that this may seem like a national issue, but it's a local issue affecting many women in our area. And I don't think our council should underestimate how this resolution, sorry, a little nervous, this resolution, will show our state legislators that we support them. This act, I know there's been lots of questions about the Roe Act specifically. It does a few key things. First, I'll say abortion is legal in Massachusetts, not going anywhere. But what this act will do is it removes some outdated language, many provisions that are not currently enforced, for example, a 24-hour waiting period. I also know all of you got an email I sent that has way more information in it. I'm not sure if you had time to read it. And then the second thing it'll do is it does expand access past 24 weeks in the case of fetal anomalies. So when a woman or family finds out, or a person with a uterus finds out that the fetus they're carrying has a fetal anomaly and that that fetus is not viable, it's very sad. It's a really tragic situation in many cases. This act would allow for that woman to get healthcare in her own state, a state that, I might add, has some of the best healthcare in the country. And right now, these women and families are forced to travel long distances out of state to end a pregnancy because it would end anyway.
Thank you. Thank you. Tom Tog?
My name's Tom Tog. I'm 12 Walnut Street, here in Greenfield. I want to address a local issue that hopefully isn't as emotionally charged as some that we've had here tonight, and that is the French King Highway zoning overlay. Is one of the things that struck me, and I don't want to exactly just repeat what has already been said, is that I don't think very many times the city council has basically gone against a four-to-one planning committee vote. I bet probably never before. And the reason was because the vote on the French King Highway was tainted because it was tied up with the new library. And the new library basically was held hostage. Now that we're going to be voting on the new library anyways, as a number of other people have said, and I also very much agree, the people of Greenfield should also vote on the zoning of the French King Highway area. I think otherwise, whatever happens, you're going to have people that are going to resent it. I think whatever the vote is, the chance of it being more accepted would happen if the whole population had a chance to vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Russell Thomas?
Hi. My name is Russell Thomas, Precinct 5, 38 Orchard Street. And I'm a former member of the town council when it was a much larger body. Thank you for what you do. To cut to the chase, I actually applaud the prospect of a new library vote. Thanks again for enabling that to happen. I am concerned by the energy spent to have our few remaining developable acres of land used for more retail, effectively using the scarce land to duplicate generally what's already here, which I think would cannibalize business from other local establishments. I believe it's shortsighted and a wasted opportunity to do that. Sometimes it's said that good things come to those who wait. Obviously, if all you do is wait, you miss opportunities. Conversely, if you are too eager or too desperate, you risk committing to something less than the best option. I think good things are more likely to come to those who go out and look for them, who weigh options and deliberate carefully, who even risk a bit focusing on the future of potential growth industry, something that could inspire our students and energize people who live here, making Greenfield attractive to newcomers and new talent. That's my opinion. I believe in democracy, messy as it often is, and zoning is powerful, and you can strengthen or stagnate our economy. You and the council have this power entrusted by the voters, but these major issues deserve direct input from voters. Please consider placing these questions on the November ballot. There is still time to do so. Failing to do so will be a lamentable failure to act. Please take this opportunity to act. Please give Greenfield voters a chance to determine our direction. And if the outcome is not what I expect or favor, I still love this town, and I still say hi to neighbors who disagree with me. We're still all in this together, unless someone moves away, and I'm not moving. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. Lois St. Germain? And you're speaking for Nancy Kelly, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Her statement. I am totally against any safe city ordinance in the town of Greenfield.
Could I still have your address, though?
301 Chapman Street. I'm a property owner and a voter with a vested interest in the future of this town or city. Speaking for Nancy Kelly. And I agree with her. Thank you.
Thank you. Alyssa Kai?
Good evening. Good evening, councilors. If anyone's interested, top of the third inning, Giants 3, Red Sox 0. I apologize to bring bad news. If any person attendant typically identifies as a literalist with the Bible on such matters as homosexuality, that ignores the lack of any mention of abortion in such texts that is their prerogative. If any person attendant selectively chops up near-apocryphal first-to-fifth-century church writings concerning the nature of formed and unformed fetuses, that is their prerogative. If any person present in turn ignores writings such as Doctor of the Church Hildegard of Vingan's 11th Century Treatise Concerning Effective Abortifacence, excuse me, or Anselm of Canterbury's claim that, quote, "He is not a murderer who brings about abortion before the soul is in the body," unquote, that is their prerogative. If any person here refuses to acknowledge the rapid development of church doctrine from gradual ensolement to birth at conception in the last 300 years, that is their prerogative. If any person present refuses to confront anti-abortion rhetoric's development over those last 300 years as a direct result of patriarchal social control in a racist colonial state, that is their prerogative. And lastly, if any person here argues that we ought to follow federal law and oppose the Safe Cities Ordinance therefore, and condemns the council for upholding Roe v. Wade, itself a federal law, and instead takes refuge in straw man and slippery slopes to comfort themselves, that is also their prerogative. To the council, I encourage you to uphold the right to safe, legal, and on-demand abortions for all people in this city and beyond. I apologize. I live at 172 Highland Avenue, Greenfield, Mass. Thanks.
Thank you. Andy Rothschild?
Good evening. Andy Rothschild, 32 Lilian Street. First of all, I want to thank each of you for doing the work you do. I bet it's not very easy, and you deserve a lot of appreciation for what you do. I wrote a short letter to the editor to you all not too long ago, but I'm going to read it about French King. Back in March, the Greenfield City Council voted to accept funding for a new library as part of a compromise deal to remove the French King Overlay District from the city's zoning ordinance and to triple the threshold for a major development review. Subsequent to that, there was a citizens' referendum on the library funding, placing that issue on the November ballot for the citizens of Greenfield to decide, and effectively decoupling the library and zoning issues. I'm requesting that you, at this meeting, place the two zoning questions on the November ballot as well. That would allow the citizens of Greenfield to vote an up or down on the zoning questions at the same time but separately from the library vote. Thanks again.
Thank you. Can I please have Myo Friedman? Or is it Mike?
Hello, I'm Mike Friedman, 9 Myrtle Street. I'm relatively new to Greenfield. The first time I ever voted in this country was last year at the high school, and when the woman checked off my name, she had a tear in her eye. I am an immigrant, but now a legal citizen. My parents were immigrants at a certain point. My grandparents were immigrants as well. And you might say, why was my whole family full of immigrants? And that's because my grandparents died in Auschwitz. So, and the reason my grandparents didn't is because they were already in labor camps, and that's how they survived. So regarding safe cities, immigrants don't come to a place like Greenfield to start shenanigans or damage property or do whatever you might imagine from watching a YouTube video. They come because they need to. And there's a long history of immigrants not being allowed in, and we know what happens, and we know what has happened. So I'm here on behalf of my long lineage of immigrants and people who had to flee and eventually had safe harbor or didn't, and I am imploring you to make Greenfield a safe city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, we'll go to non-residents. Aaron Kelly.
Wait a minute, I put my name on there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He put his name on the public hearing.
Oh, you're on the public hearing. You want to, do you want to speak on, not at the public hearing, about the Milbrook Culvert?
I want to talk about the safe cities and sanding the town.
Okay. Garrett Conley, come forward, please. Garrett Conley, come forward, please.
Garrett Conley, 84 Congress Street. Excuse me if I signed the wrong paper.
Okay.
I forgot to mention about the sand last month. Starting again on sand. That sand behind the dam is very valuable. There's a world shortage of sand. I'm sure that the sand back there, well, I'm not sure. I don't know for sure. But the sand will help pay to take the dam down and make the river run free. There's no human improvement that can make on a river at this point in time. So now, I never, I'm amazed that you have to deal with abortion issue. But we do know that providing housing and education leads to a slowly declining population. And so if we just contribute to education and safe housing, we will get the lower population. The problem is, it's antithetical to capitalism, which needs a growing population and sends armies to every single nation of brown people who has a large immigrant population in the United States. They've all been chased here by the U.S. Army. We've got to have to remember that. There is no population here that hasn't been driven here by the United States government. It's a fact. So now let's get to the French King Highway. Really, I came here quite a few months ago and mentioned that I felt you were panicking, and that a panic would lead to problems. So here we are. You panicked? You made a compromise? Library, maybe a library is a good idea. We'll find out from the voters now. Maybe an extended strip mall is a good idea? Let the voters decide. I don't think it's a good idea, but maybe everybody will.
Okay, thank you, Garrett.
I hear the bell. Thank you very much.
Erin Kelly, please. Thank you.
Point of order. Point of order, Madam--
Yes, Counselor Mass?
I see the time is now almost 8:15.
I think I have five people.
Eight, okay.
So--
Erin Kelly, 73 Canal and Turners. I came here to support the safe city ordinance, and I didn't realize it was going to be anti-abortion. So I apologize. I didn't know about the abortion issue. But these issues are not disconnected. They are both fear-based and based in hate to oppose these issues. It's racist. It's classist. It's ableist. There are gendered components and sexist components. I work in domestic and sexual violence advocacy. I see real trauma every day. I see fear. I see unsafe situations. I see instability. I see violence. And it's not just people who work with survivors. People are living this. When we do not support them, when we push them away, when we do not give them all options, we make them vulnerable. They go into the shadows. They cannot reach out. And there are survivors in this room. And I can 99.9999% sure there's abusers in this room right now. Child rapists, they're around us. They don't come from a certain place. They don't look like a certain thing. They're among us. And that's what makes them scary. They're right here with us now. Look around. Think about that. You know, to hear these bogus statistics, these sensationalized stories about body parts, again, stop infantilizing women and children. These issues affect all people of all genders, both the-- the safe city issue, pushing people back to unsafe lands, unsafe home countries, it's horrible. Pushing people away from services of reproductive health care? Absolutely not. There's domestic and sexual violence advocacy services here in Greenfield. There's reproductive and sexual health services here in Greenfield. There are nonjudgmental services for people to access. Being pressured into abortion, that's abuse. That's abuse. You're being discriminated against because you're pregnant or because you've sought an abortion? That's discrimination. Let's fight that. Let's not take away other people's choices. We're talking about people here. All right? We're talking about people. And I just, I'm not here to talk behind me. I'm here to talk to you. Please do the right thing. Safe cities save lives. Abortion saves lives.
Okay, thank you. Andrea McGon?
Good evening. My name is Andrea McCann. I live in 231 Northfield, Main Street in Northfield. So I just wanted to come here today and just say, I'm really happy to be alive. I'm really glad that I get to live and that I was never aborted. One-third of my generation has been aborted. I am very happy that all the people in this room are here and present, that none of them were aborted. I'm really happy that each one of you, members of the city council, was never aborted because you are here and present, and your lives give joy to other people. So I just wanted to say that. It is a beautiful thing to be alive, alive. There's a resolution on, you are considering a resolution to promote the Roe Act. Let's get to the point. Abortion takes a human life. Life begins at conception. And each person at conception, even though you are only the size of a cell, and each one of us was there, even though we don't remember it, abortion takes a human life. Each person has a soul from the moment of conception, a fully-formed human soul. So I just wanted to say, please do everything you can in your power to support and defend human lives. I want to end with a quote from Mother Teresa, who we all know was a fantastic person and helped those who were suffering on the streets of Calcutta. She said, "How can there be, how can one say that there are too many children? It's like saying there are too many flowers." So all of us here in the Connecticut River Valley know the importance of agriculture, of plants, of fruit, of flowers. Let's make this a verdant place, a beautiful and rich place, and not take the lives of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Orvina Estela Cruz?
Hi. My name is Orvina. I'm from Turner Falls. And I came to represent the pro-life movement. I'm thoroughly against abortion. And if I'm voting you, I want you to support my, the pro-life movement, that abortion is not safe, and it should not be a choice. Our body is not a choice. Our body is a given gift from God. And I truly believe that if we abort our children, our next generation will have no children. It will not see any children at all. And also, thank to God that we're here, we're born, that it's not, it's not coincidence that we're here. The Lord gave us a life for a reason. And it's a big reason that you're here, too. And also, I also, I hear a lot of comments about the SAFE Act, about the immigration. We have to thank the people that come from another land. They come here, they're suffering so much in their countries. And they come for opportunities here. And we should be grateful that they're helping in the farms because not all of us take the opportunity to work in farms. I myself am a farmer, and I love it because I get to spend time in the ground and contemplate. And also, please vote that we not have no more abortion and do not let that law come here to have an abortion on nine months. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Catherine Biclo? Excuse me?
Hi. I'll try not to take up too much of your time. Everything's been said, and it's been said pretty well. I just, I did live in Greenfield for 10 years, and I wanted to just make a statement about the resolution, of quote, "Resolution Affirming Support for Access to Safe and Legal Abortion." We all know that abortion has been legal for over 45 years. And we all know that it's not safe for a mother or for a child. In 1984, I was at the Universal Unitarian Church confronting Bill Baird. And he was using a trite argument about coat hanger abortions. And this was after abortions were safe and were legal for over 10 years. Since that time, there's two things that have been discovered, the incredible magnificent viability of an unborn child, and the fact that this radical position of abortion has gotten so extreme that we're actually willing to support infanticide. I never thought in my entire life I would ever see the day that we would support infanticide. It's just insane. I'm here because I want to speak for the 2,246 bodies that were discovered in the home of pro-abortionist Ulrich Klopfer in Illinois, where it wasn't even addressed by the media. I'm here to address the 862,000 abortions in 2017 that were considered a great statistic, a low statistic, 862,000 abortions. And I'm here for Colott Elise and Laura Hope Smith, who both died from safe and legal abortions in Massachusetts. Thank you for your time. Good evening.
Thank you. I'm sorry. April is the last speaker.
Hi, thank you. I'm here with my husband, Jay. We are the new directors of the Franklin County Pro-Life Organization here in Greenfield.
You name and address, please.
April Helenick, and 124 State Street, Chevron Falls. The organization is called Catholics for Life. We are in an amazing time of history where we are doing our best to make sure the rights to each person are fulfilled to the greatest capability possible. We have Black Lives Matter signs on our lawns, women's marches and protests to obtain equal rights for women. We want to be sure that handicap accessibility is mandatory and that we only use the correct pronouns when discussing mental, physical, and social disabilities for each human that is alive. This is the time to be alive, more than any other time in history. And yet it is no secret to any well-researched pro-life advocate that it is for these reasons that we need to decrease the accessibility, if not end abortion altogether. African-American, Latino, and immigrant populations have clearly been documented in several publications that the original intent for abortion clinics were to destroy the population of our African-Americans. Since 1973, abortion has reduced the black population by over 25%. Black lives do matter, and here we are supporting something that directly affects these communities as a whole. As far as women, or minor females, 40% of them had abortions, have admitted that neither of their parents knew about their abortions despite all the dangers involved. Minors cannot get a cavity filled without parental consent, but they can kill their own child. We want our women to be healthy in all aspects. And according to the American Psychological Association, 28% regret their abortions within the first two years. And a recent Cambridge University study showed that out of 877,000 women, if they had an abortion, there was an 81% increase in depression, mental illness, and attempted suicide after an abortion. 70% of women will abort their baby if it has the possibility of a Down syndrome diagnosis, wiping out an entire population of beautiful humans based on an extra chromosome they obtain. Anyone here in this room that has a child, grandchild, nieces and nephews, know that there is struggling school systems. Where are the children? According to the CDC, the replacement rate is at an all-time low, once again, the fourth year in a row, surpassing even the lowest replacement rates of the Great Recession. Since 2005, when the first of our six children were born, 8,258,000 to 10,981,000 of their peers in the U.S. have been killed due to abortion.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. You guys, please, please. Counselor Wheeler? Page three. Could you do the second reading?
Thank you, Count, thank you, Madam President, Vice President, President tonight. City Council's second reading, September 18, 2019. Approve repurposing in the amount of $300,000 of previously authorized for repair of the Maplebrook Culvert for INI, inflow and infiltration, evaluation, and repairs.
Okay. And could you read the public hearing as well?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing. In accordance with Home Charter, Home Rule Charter, the Greenfield City Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, September 18, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. at John Zahn Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street, to receive public input on the following. Approve repurposing in the amount of $300,000 of previously authorized for repair of the Maplebrook Culvert for INI, inflow and infiltration, evaluation, and repairs. The City Council may consider the same on Wednesday, September 18, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. at John Zahn Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street. Materials can be obtained from the City Clerk's Office, 14 Court Square, from 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, or by phone, 413-772-1555, extension 6163. Karen Reno, Greenfield City Council President.
Okay. Is there anyone interested in speaking at the public hearing on the culvert? Let's just read. Would you like to leave it open, or can we just close it? Okay, let's just move on. At this time-- Counselor Mass?
Madam Vice President, I think we have two items coming up, a motion to suspend the rules of procedure and a motion to go into executive session. I think neither one are debatable. I just want to make sure I'm correct, that we have a pretty large crowd here tonight.
I'm going to explain it.
If we vote those, we will not be able to go to motions, orders, and resolutions before the executive session. Is that correct?
Correct, right. Okay. So we're going to put forth a motion to suspend-- you don't have to leave. We are going to leave, and we'll be back. Okay? So do I have a motion to suspend the rules of procedure? Counselor Mayo? Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Again, we are going to leave. You can stay.
Point of order.
Counselor Mass?
Madam President, Vice President, I think, first of all, I think you need to call for the noes and the abstentions on that motion. And I also think there needs to be a motion on executive session.
All right. And let me first start by telling you why we're going executive session. This is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and our litigation, and an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. And the chair so declares, and I've asked that to come forward. So all in favor of the suspend the rules of procedure? Say aye. Can you people, raise your hand for no. That'll be the easiest. Okay. Counselor Mass? Yep, sorry.
Mass.
Can--
What are we voting on now?
To suspend the--
Yes.
--rules of procedure.
Yes.
To suspend, to go into-- Okay. Do you need to vote again?
Point of order.
Counselor Mass?
Madam Vice President, I believe a motion to suspend the rules of procedure is necessary if we want to go into executive session. However, I believe it requires a two-thirds vote. Is that correct?
To suspend the rules of procedure, I believe it only requires a majority.
Majority.
Let me double-check. I think you're right.
Okay. So they don't want, okay.
I think it's a majority vote.
Okay. Okay, it is a majority vote.
So--
So--
Can we ask a show of hands?
Can we do it by a show of hands so we can get a count? All in favor, suspended?
To suspend the rules of procedure, show of hands. One, two, three, four, five, six.
I can't see everybody.
And then?
No. No. Just so everybody, we're clear.
One, two, three, four. Okay. One, two, three, four, five. So the majority, six yes, five no, so you suspend the rules.
Okay, we suspend the rules.
So we have to go to executive session.
All right. Can I have a motion to go into executive session?
It needs to be read out loud.
Okay, I just did. Okay. Okay, City Council, move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council votes to enter into executive session for reason number three, to discuss strategy with respect to pending and imminently threatened litigation where an open meeting would have detrimental effect, the litigation of opposition of the public body. The following is a... Read these?
Summary listing.
Summary listing of the items to be discussed.
You need to read them.
Franklin County Superior Court case of Al Norman versus City of Greenfield, litigation involving P. Buchanan, litigation involving T. Dodge, litigation involving S. Kenny, litigation involving K. Friedman, litigation involving E. Brachia. Threatened litigation involved International Container Company. Okay, roll call.
Counselor Sun.
Oh, he doesn't know. Somebody's got to tell him.
Counselor Burson.
Yep.
Counselor Alice. Counselor Pyfram.
No.
Counselor Dolan. Counselor Gilmore.
No.
Counselor Wheeler.
Yes.
Counselor Mayo.
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Mass. Counselor Sun.
No.
Does the Vice President wish to vote?
Yes. I brought it forward, so thank you.
Two, three, four, five, no. One, two, three, four, five, six, yes. So it passes.
Okay.
So you have to announce that we will come back into regular session. 8:33 right now, 8:34, and we will come back into regular session.
Okay, when we come back, we'll come back to regular council. We're going to come back into City Council. Thank you for waiting, and it is now 9:23 p.m. Okay. Okay. We are now on motions, orders and resolutions. And the first one we'll do is the mayor's veto on page six. Who reads that? Sheila, would you like to read that? Counselor Gilmore, I'm sorry.
Absolutely. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the establish the city of Greenfield as a safe city order that's previously voted on by the City Council on August 21, 2019, and vetoed by the mayor on September 3, 2019, is hereby approved.
Okay, so... Oh, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Counselor Dolan, seconds. So the explanation of the...
That was Mayo.
Oh, sorry, was it?
Yes. It was Counselor Mayo.
It was the Counselor to my right. A yes vote from the council would uphold the mayor's veto. A no vote from council would override the mayor's veto. Madam Clerk, could I have a roll call on this? But you...
I think I'm quite right.
Yeah. Hold on one moment. I think I... Let me have this, get some clarification, then we'll debate it. Counselor Mass, do you want us to start or would you like to just finish?
Start it.
Okay. All right. Would anyone like to speak to this? I don't know if you're thinking, Counsel Burson, or you're raising your hand.
I'm thinking.
Okay. Counselor Sun, would you like to speak to this?
What would... It was made, it was voted to put it on the ballot. Now, with this, mayor's... How would we put it on the ballot? You know, on what, yes, would we make it put on the ballot?
Okay, hold on one moment. I think we are looking into this, so...
My understanding, to answer your question, I'm not sure if this fully answers your question, is that, is that the, back in August, I believe, right, in response to a referendum petition, I think the council voted to put this ordinance on the ballot, on the November ballot. And then subsequent to that, my understanding is the mayor, please correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is the mayor then vetoed the ordinance, which then has led to this process here. So basically, my opinion, and I think the opinion I've expressed, is that if you were vote, if you vote to approve the ordinance again by the two-thirds vote of the full council, which is what the charter requires to override the veto, then that question can still remain on the ballot because it's, you know, it was an ordinance passed, it went through, it was finally approved by the council in accordance with the legislative process outlined in the charter, which includes section 3-7, which is also referenced in the referendum petition. So that's basically kind of the lay of the land right now, that in order to remain on the ballot, in our opinion, as a binding question, you have to override, you have to override the mayor's veto.
Counselor Dolan?
I'd like to make a motion to table this.
Set it.
Point of order.
Point of order.
Counselor Mass.
Madam, Madam President, the, I believe that the, our Greenfield Town Charter requires and says shall, that the town council shall at the, within, at the next meeting, hold a, consider the mayor's override. I don't believe we have the capability of taking action to override this within, if we don't act on it today. And thus, I believe the effect will be that if the council tables, that the mayor's veto will remain in force, and therefore it will not go on the ballot. Can we get an opinion from both the parliamentarian and town attorney?
Well, there's no doubt about the fact, but the 3-7 says shall again. So I think you're right, Counselor Mass.
So I'm looking at section 3-7. Looking at section 3-7, which outlines the approval process. The city shall, okay, it says the city council, assuming a disapproval by the mayor, the city council shall enter the objections of the mayor on its records, and not sooner than 10 days nor after 30 days from the date of its return to the city council, shall again consider the same measure. So as I read that, and again, I can be corrected by reference to some other language, as I read that, as long as the council meets no sooner than 10 days nor after 30 days after the date of the return of the disapproval to the council, which I believe was September 3, somewhere in that, that range. Then I don't see reference to it that it has to be the next meeting. I don't see that, that, section 3-7 just talks about a window that that council meeting has to take place to vote on, to vote on the, on the mayor's veto.
Right. And I believe the 30th day would be October 3. So if it were to be tabled, it would mean we would need to have a special meeting. Okay, just...
May I say something?
Okay. Madam Clerk?
So by Massachusetts law, for a question to be on, or in this case, if you choose off the ballot, the form of the final question needs to be voted on 35 days prior to the election date. The 35th day is October 1, so it would need to be officially voted September 30.
By September 3?
Yes.
Wait, we have someone else weighing in. Hold on, they're calling it in. Okay. So there's a motion to table on the floor, and there was a second, correct, by Counselor Gilmore?
Yep.
Okay.
Point of order.
Counselor Mass.
Just, so I understand, is that a, just a motion to table, or is it a motion to table to a date certain? Can you inquire of the moving parties?
Would you like to make a friendly amendment to that of when you would like?
If you, I'd take any date that Counselor Dolan is, is acceptable to Counselor Dolan. I have no particular date, as long as it's by September 30.
What's the rationale?
Except to...
Maybe September 30.
What'd you say, September 30 or October 3? What did you say?
September 30.
September 30.
I don't know what day of the week that is. Perhaps someone can inform me. I'm not certain what the advantage of doing that is. A tabled motion can be brought up at a special meeting, correct?
But we still have, it has to be in that timeframe.
Yeah. But there's no, I don't understand what I'm gaining by adding a specific date.
Point of order?
Perhaps someone can.
This is supposed to be non-debatable.
No, it's debatable. Oh, no, tabling is not debatable. I'm sorry. But a friendly amendment can be made.
Okay, so...
Not a friendly amendment. Yeah, it's not.
So you don't, you're not taking the friendly amendment, correct?
No, I'm not.
Okay. All right.
Now you have to have a vote.
Okay. Going to have a vote of the full council?
We're voting on the, on the table, correct?
Motion to table. Okay. Now we must, okay. In favor of tabling it, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
No.
Okay. Could the noes raise their hands so we could just...
One, two, three, four.
I'm sorry.
Okay. So that would mean it would be, can we see a yes raise your hand? Can the yes?
Can the yes raise their hands?
One, two, three, four, five, six. Yes, have it.
Okay. This is tabled. All right. Let me just catch my place.
Are you going to?
Oh, my God. Agenda item number 11.
We have two more, two more motions here. Have them tabled.
Did you want to go out of order and take the primaries next? So ask for general consent.
Okay.
So the wave, the motion was already made.
We've already, we've already waved the motion. We're going to do these two first.
Would you like me to read the Wiley Russell, please, Madam?
Oh, we, I was taking it out of, we had already made a motion to change the order. So we were going to do these two and do this, all the discussion on these two now, and then continue on.
We have to ignore, let's say the council received an individual petition.
Okay, so this is the individual, individual petition to the Greenfield City Council from Okay. So everyone on council has received this petition.
Point of order.
Counselor Mass.
Madam President, I understand we suspend the rules of procedure for the purpose of going into executive session. I don't know that we suspended the rules of procedure, that the will of the council as a whole is to jump to that item. And is, was, was that your interpretation of the?
When I did, okay, we can, we can... Yep. We can just do this one. Yeah. Right. All right. So page 12, take from the table, the Wiley Russell Dam repair.
Thank you. Oh, boy. Thank you, Madam Vice President. Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council take from the table order number FY19-121, the sum of $120,000 be appropriated for the repair design for the Wiley Russell Dam. To meet said appropriation, a treasurer with the approval of the mayor is hereby authorized to borrow said sum of 120,000 pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 44 or any other enabling statute. And the mayor is hereby authorized to apply for, contract for, accept and expend any federal and/or state grants or bond premiums available for this project to be used to reduce the appropriation. And further, the mayor is authorized to take any action necessary to carry out the intent and purpose of these projects, which was tabled at the May 22, 2019 City Council Annual Budget Meeting.
Second.
We need to take a vote.
Okay, we need to take a vote, take it from the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Oh, could you raise your hand if it's a no? Counsel...
It's off the table.
Okay, it's off the table. Okay, it's off the table.
Just.
Okay, discussion, and we'll start with Counselor Wheeler.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Just to remind everyone, the report from Ways and Means was, well, there was, there was no recommendation given, it was a split, split vote. Speaking as Precinct 7 Counselor, I am in favor of this project, however, it's been on the, it's been tabled repeatedly for many months, so I would encourage counselors to vote as you so choose, with the assumption that if it fails, a new mayor and a new council will either through public hearings or another process, find a way forward on this one.
Anyone else? Okay. Let's do a roll call vote.
Counselor Sun? Counselor Burson?
No.
Counselor Alice?
No.
Counselor Pythrum?
No.
Counselor Dolan?
No.
Counselor Gilmore?
No.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
No.
Counselor Mass?
No.
Okay, it fails. Okay, so, page 14, take from the table, the Green River Schools Heating System.
Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council take from the table order number FY20-009, the sum of $460,000 be appropriated for the replacement of the heating system in Green River Schools, and to meet said appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is hereby authorized to borrow said sum of 460,000 pursuant to MGL Chapter 44 or any other enabling statute, and the mayor is hereby authorized to apply for, contract for, accept and expend any federal and/or state grants or bond premiums available for this project to be used to reduce the appropriation, and further, the mayor is authorized to take any action necessary to carry out the intent and purpose of these projects, which was tabled at the July 17th, 2019 City Council Meeting.
Second.
Okay, second from?
Doug.
Counselor Mayo. Okay. So, a vote to take it from the table? All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose?
No.
Okay. So, can I have the noes raise their hand, please? Okay, that stays on the table, thank you. Okay. Page 16, take from the table, Public Safety Commission. Counselor Gilmore?
Sorry. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council take from the table order number FY20-018, amend City Charter Article 6, Administrative Organization Section 11, Public Safety Commission Subsection D, powers and duties for, by deleting civil service law and inserting in its place applicable or collective bargaining agreements to read as follows. Do you want me to read the whole section? Or is that not necessary? Section 6-11, Public Safety Commission, Section D, Paragraph 4. Final interviews for appointments and promotions of officers and men and women in the Police and Fire Department shall be conducted by the commission and the chief. The chief shall submit his recommendation to the commission, and the commission, if it does not agree with said recommendation, shall submit written reasons for not concurring with said recommendations to the mayor. Appointments and promotions of public safety personnel shall be made in accordance with collective bargaining agreements and applicable general laws and local hiring policy requirements as defined by the mayor respectively.
Okay. Do you have a report on that from? We need a second, I know. Counselor Mayo? Yes.
Madam President, point of order. Madam Vice President, I think you need to, we need to have a vote to take it from the table.
Just one no? Counselor Mass? Hold on. Okay. Okay, any discussion? Counselor Dolan, then Counselor Mass.
I'd like to offer an amendment that we replace the term "men and women" with "employees" out of respect for the trans folks in our community.
Okay, friendly amendment, okay. Did you hear them?
Yes.
Yep, Counselor Mass.
Tonight at Ways and Means, we had a first reading of a contract for the Supervisors Union of the Police Department. If you have, many of you may not have had an opportunity to review that contract. I made a cursory review, I asked a question of Mark Smith, Administrator, Assistant of the Mayor, and he, what we were told, as I recall, at the public hearing related to pulling out of civil service, and one of the reasons why the union was supportive was that they were going to contract related to, through collective bargaining, about hiring and about promotions. Nothing in the contract we're being asked to approve next month does that. Specifically, there was a question about preserving veterans' preference in hiring. That was not included. There's nothing about diversity in hiring, there's no, no provisions that we were assured would be in the collective bargaining agreement. I think it makes sense for us to table this at least for one month until we see that contract and have a chance to ask more questions about it, to ensure we're not, not pulling out of this without the ability to get that collective bargaining done.
Okay, Counselor Gilmore?
I think some of these concerns are already addressed by state and federal laws. I know my collective bargaining agreement that I helped negotiate for, you know, my coworkers at UMass, we don't have any references to diversity requirements or veteran status. These things are already governed by other laws.
So, Counselor Dolan? Were you raising your hand?
Sorry, I thought there was a name coming after mine. I would just say, if the contract has already been negotiated and we send it back for renegotiation, I think that would put the city in a position of not bargaining in good faith, so I don't think that that's an option at the moment.
So, Counselor Mass?
Well, all the contracts are subject to approval of the council, and we don't send them back, we just approve them or disapprove them. The, that's not what I'm suggesting, the contract not be approved, and supplemental, supplemental agreement in the contract can be reached related to these additional practices. What I'm suggesting is we don't take the extraordinary step of pulling out the only thing that gives veterans' preference to police officers in this, and firefighters, by pulling out of civil service before they've had an opportunity to do that. Otherwise, there's no, we have decided to get rid of veterans' preferences for police officers and firefighters, and that is not what we were discussing in subcommittee. That may be the will of this council at this time, and certainly, if the majority wants to do that, that is, that is fine. I would just like to hear from the police union why they thought they were going to get that, why it didn't come out in their contract, is it part of something else? I'd like to have that information before I jump out.
Counselor Gilmore?
So, the Fire Department is not ready to come out of civil service at this point, so I wanted to make that very clear, because I know that some of the firefighters still do have some concerns about this. But as far as what the union wants to put into their contracts and what they negotiate with management, I don't feel like it's our place here to micromanage that. That's between them at the bargaining table, and I think we need to leave that and let that just be sacred.
Are there any other comments? So, Counselor Mayo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to comment on Counselor Gilmore's statement is that having negotiated contracts on a state level, I can say that her statement is indeed correct with, with regard to veterans, and that it's already kind of included into state law, and the protections are there, it doesn't need to be written into a local contract.
Counselor Mass?
State law protects discrimination against veterans. It doesn't guarantee a veteran's preference. That is what civil service does.
Counselor Gilmore?
I hope that we call the question.
Okay. A motion to call the question? Okay, this is non-debatable. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, oppose? The ayes? Okay, show of hands? Oh, call in the question.
Are you, yes?
Everyone?
So, I don't know if this is procedurally correct, but if you were going to vote on this language tonight, there is clarifying language on page 18, that the language under Charter Section 611 should be amended to, if that is the will of the council.
Point of order. Point of order, I think the question's been called, and we can't make an amendment at this point.
Okay, so, we're going to vote. Yes, a roll call vote, please, so, in favor of this amendment?
I have a question, please.
Who's talking to me? Oh, Counselor Sun?
Yes, so, a yes vote takes this, so the police get onto the civil service. Out of civil service. And a no vote makes them stay.
That's correct, Counselor Sun.
Counselor Sun?
Yes.
Counselor Burson?
No.
Counselor Alice?
Obstand.
Counselor Pythrum?
Obstand.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Mass?
No.
Penny DeWish to vote?
Obstand.
Six yes, two no, two abstentions.
Okay. Did everybody hear her? I'm sorry.
Six yes, two no, two abstentions.
Madam President, point of order. I believe our, we have to have a minimum of seven votes in order to pass any measure, and therefore, the measure fails.
Yes.
So, somebody can bring it back with that language.
We have to declare that the motion fails.
Okay, this motion is failed. Okay. Okay, the next one. Page 19. This is the Maple Brook Culvert. Counselor Wheeler, were you? This is you?
City Council, upon recommendation of the mayor, in accordance with Mass. General Law, has moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council approves repurposing an amount of $300,000 of previously authorized for repair of the Maple Brook Culvert for INI inflow and infiltration evaluation and repairs.
Do I have a second? Okay, is there any discussion?
May I? Thank you. We took this up at Ways and Means, there was unanimous recommendation to table until November, when the thought was there would be a decision on the library, which would impact the potential fire station, and the thought was that those decisions would impact the Maple Brook Culvert, and there was some, let's see, how should I put it? There was, there's more information to be gathered on the INI and the, well, excuse me, I should have taken better notes on this one, it's been a long night. Counselor Mass asked whether we would know if this money would be necessary for Maple Brook Culvert, and the fact is that we don't know yet. Director Warner made a recommendation to pass this now, but as a committee, we felt that we would be acting under better information if we table till November.
Okay, Counselor Mass?
Move to table to the November.
Do I have a second? Counselor Alice? All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? Would the noes raise their hands? Okay, it is tabled. Okay. Page 42.
Ordered that, ordered that to amend the FY20 Water Enterprise by reducing the appropriated amount by $264,832. Revised appropriation amount is $1,491,784, and that $285,285 be included in appropriation from the General Fund for Water Indirect Costs and be allocated to the Water Enterprise Fund for Funding, and that $1,491,784 be raised from water receipts for the fiscal year starting July 1, 2019, and ending June 30, 2020.
Okay, Counselor Mass, seconds, and what was the determination?
Oh, the recommendation from Ways and Means.
I got it right this time.
Was unanimous positive. This is retained earnings, you know, eliminated the need to budget a surplus, so this lowers the water rate.
Okay, is there any discussion on this? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Okay, this will be Counselor Hirschfeld now, on page 46.
City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council approves the attached resolution titled "A Resolution Affirming Support for Access to Safe and Legal Abortions in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and Across the United States." We had.
Excuse me, one second, could I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, thank you.
We had a negative recommendation with three no's and one yes.
Okay. Okay, is there any discussion? Counselor Wheeler.
I thank Counselor Dolan in putting this forward. He asked me to co-sponsor it, and I'm happy to. Would there be benefit to reading this? I'm asking a rhetorical question that you're welcome to nod your head to. I feel that a lot of people maybe were present for a lot of public comment, but it seems that, I know at least one public comment acknowledged that they hadn't actually seen the resolution. So if anyone would like the resolution to be read, I'm happy to do that. All right.
Okay.
"A resolution affirming support for access to safe and legal abortion in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and across the United States. Whereas the U.S. Supreme Court decision Roe v. Wade of 1973 ruled that the due process clause of the 14th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution provides a fundamental right to privacy that protects a woman's liberty to choose when or whether to have children, including a woman's qualified right to terminate her pregnancy. And whereas many states, including Alabama, Kentucky, Georgia, Louisiana and Missouri, have in direct conflict with Supreme Court precedent recently passed laws that attempt to ban or restrict access to legal and safe abortions. And whereas reproductive health, including abortion, is a vital component of overall health, and healthcare is recognized as a fundamental human right. And whereas an individual's freedom to make reproductive decisions is vital to their safety, well-being, economic opportunity and ability to participate equally in society. And whereas the Massachusetts Legislature is currently considering the Roe Act, Senate Bill 1209, House Bill 3320, a bill to remove obstacles and expand access to women's reproductive health, co-sponsored by State Senator Joe Commerford and State Rep. Paul Mark, now therefore be it resolved that the Greenfield City Council hereby states its commitment to the protection of abortion rights, reproductive healthcare rights and individuals' rights to make reproductive decisions about their own bodies. Be it further resolved that the Greenfield City Council does hereby support the immediate passage of Massachusetts Senate Bill S. 1209, an act to remove obstacles and expand abortion access, and House Bill H. 3320, an act removing obstacles and expanding access to women's reproductive health. Be it further resolved that the City Clerk of the City of Greenfield should cause a copy of this resolution to be sent to Massachusetts Governor Charles Baker, lead sponsor of S. 1209, State Senator Harriet Chandler, lead sponsors of 3320, State Reps. Patricia Haddad and Jay Livingstone, State Senator Joe Commerford and State Representative Paul Mark." Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wheeler. Here's there any discussion? Counselor Dolan?
I'd just like to introduce it. A lot of ink has been spilled over this over the last few months. I'd just like to say this is a fairly standard use of the resolution form. It's something that neighboring communities have already adopted.
I just can't hear you.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Oh, this is a fairly standard use of the resolution to support legislation that's currently in the legislature. Neighboring communities have done it. For me, this is a common sense update to an existing law, and it protects a vital right. I hope that we can have a unanimous vote.
Okay, any other comments? Counselor Sun?
I got, I got, this is what I perceive, hang on, I perceive, that people would rather kill kids. And I gotta, I passed a document to have every council read this, you know, from Americans for United for Life. The only one that really gets anything out of this is Planned Parenthood. Every, every year, they receive $540 million to help kill kids. One year, there's 333,564 kids killed every year. You add that up, and it's, it's an awful lot of children that are killed. Now, it seems like the state of Massachusetts doesn't care how many kids they kill. And, you know, and if this goes through, it shows that some counselors would rather be dead than alive.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Sun. Counselor Mayo?
Counselor Sun, can you cite at all the numbers that you've spoken to? You know, you've talked about millions of dollars, and I'd like to see where you've cited those facts from.
Right here, in the document that I gave every, had every council read.
I'm asking you to cite the source.
It's Government Affairs Council, American United for Life, on HB 5125, Reproductive Privacy Act, submitted to the states, the Senate Committee on Health and Human Services, July 12, 2019.
So that's not an official document from either a federal or a state source?
Okay, okay.
It's from the United States.
Point of order, Madam Vice President.
I was just about to. I was just about to. Counselor Mayo, you have to address me. And he can hear you.
Okay. Madam Chair. So that's not a violation of federal or state law. That's just someone's opinion.
Okay, again, you're addressing me, so, you're done. So, Counselor Mass, then Counselor Gilmore, then Counselor Pythrom.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to this. I first campaigned for Greenfield City Council in 1998. In 1998, Bill Clinton was president, and we talked about our aims being for abortion to be safe, legal and rare. We have come a long way from safe, legal and rare to supporting late-term abortion for people, for children who are, have deformities. That said, in my six times running for town council in Greenfield, knocking at one time or another in those six city council races on every door in Greenfield, I didn't speak to everyone, but I knocked on every door. I spoke to many, many people, and all of those elections, I had exactly one person ask me what my position on abortion was. And speaking to that person, I talked to them about my feeling that that was not an issue that would or should be before the city council. And I didn't give them my answer, and they probably voted against me. They told me they were concerned because people who were elected to city council might one day run for the state legislature, and he wanted to make sure that no one moved up who disagreed with his opinions. That said, I do not believe that my personal views, which have changed over the course of those six terms, are representative of the community. And I don't know what the community's views on this particular issue are because I have not thought of it as an issue that was a matter that belonged before the city council, so I haven't engaged people. I guarantee you, there are many people who have voted for me who have very different positions than I do on this issue. I don't believe that I, at least as an individual, can represent the will of the community. And I agree with Counselor Dolan that we regularly pass resolutions for items that are before the city council, that are before the state legislature. Usually, they're about items that directly affect the city, and there's certainly an argument that this will directly affect our constituents. I certainly understand that. But it is not unique to the municipality. It's not unique to Greenfield. As such, I don't think that I'm qualified to speak to it on a individual level as a counselor. So I'm going to abstain from this vote, and so it may be, I don't think it'll be an announced vote, but it will be a vote with at least one abstention. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Gilmore, I believe you are next.
So because this is a resolution and because this is not something that happens at the city level, I feel like we need to remind ourselves that we're not going to ban abortion by voting against this resolution. This is already legal. This is, you know, as Counselor Dolan and Counselor Wheeler have already said, we're sort of communicating our wishes to Senator Commerford and Representative Mark. And I mainly wanted to say that because I felt like things were getting heated between two of my colleagues, and I just wanted to remind everyone that, you know, tomorrow, we're not changing how things happen in Greenfield with our vote tonight, so we can, we can keep it calm.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Gilmore. Okay, Counselor Pythrom was next, I believe.
Thank you. First of all, being a woman and a mother, I don't feel that we need a resolution in Greenfield to support safe and legal abortion. We already support that with a Massachusetts law and a federal law. So as a mother and a woman, this is none of council's business, and we need to step away from stuff like this. We need to focus more on our town.
Okay, okay, okay.
We need to focus more on our town and town business. We are not our own country. We represent Greenfield and Greenfield alone. I don't feel that we need to bring forward another resolution. We've got something that we follow in a guideline, and that is, that is it. So I'm not in support of this resolution at all. Thank you.
Okay, were there any other comments? Counselor Dolan, since you already spoke, can I, I'll please go to Counselor Alice, and then I'll come back to you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I was on the subcommittee that recommended a negative recommendation on this. I believe, a lot like my colleague to my left, that this is something that we, as a city council, don't need to be spending our time on. We have much bigger fish to fry on this council, as has happened over the last year or two. But on another note, I feel it's not appropriate for me to make this decision simply because I'm not unbiased to my thoughts about the issue. I have a child that was not born alive, and now that she is doing wonderfully, I could not imagine my life without her. And I think that that would cloud my judgment on making a decision on this particular resolution. Coupled with the fact that it was a negative recommendation from subcommittee based on the fact that there was five people that showed up, and they all spoke against it, and no one else bothered to show up to talk about it. I'm going to abstain, I'm going to abstain from the vote for those, for those reasons. And I believe that this is one more resolution that we should not be taking up because it is simply going to divide more than it's going to unite.
Okay, I'm so sorry, Counselor Dolan. I need to let Counselor Burson speak first, and then I'll come back. Okay?
I support this resolution wholeheartedly. It is, it is not a minor matter. This is what we do. We speak to basic freedoms and basic rights, no matter what level we are at, whether it be in the council, in the legislature, or in the United States Congress. We may not have the power to effectuate, to effectuate the final outcome, but this is fundamental to our duties and responsibilities to bring our thoughts and grievances to the people who do make those decisions. I have supported the woman's right to choose since, consistently since 1971, and I do so today with no apology. This council, if it, if it votes to accept this resolution and put it forward, adds its voice to all the other people in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts who support the woman's right to choose. Not only that, but the reason for this is that we are under assault by the most vicious President of the United States of America, and--
Okay. Excuse me. Let me remind the audience that when we had comment, none of us interrupted or made sounds up here. Give us the same respect.
And this, this resolution, if it's, if it becomes the statutory law of the Massachusetts, and if the Supreme Court makes a determination to overturn Roe versus, Roe versus Wade, what's going to happen is that it would revert to the states. And it's very, very important for the state and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to be clear that this right is sanctified in this Commonwealth. So make no distinctions, differences or beliefs about it. This is fundamental to individual, individual rights. I respect the person's right to burn the flag or to wave the flag. And I also believe that a woman's right to choose must be, must be put forth by public officials throughout, throughout the Commonwealth. You do not have to affect something generally within your purview, but you certainly can make your wishes and your voice and your vote known. So that's why I'm supporting this, and I suggest that my counselors should join me in that regard.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Dolan?
I was planning to call the question, perhaps it's not necessary.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Hirschfeld, did you have your hand up before?
Thank you. I was the only person on the committee, being the chair, who voted for this resolution because I believe too often we tend to bury our heads in the sand when it comes to doing anything outside of Greenfield that affects us. We cannot turn our heads and look away while the rest of the world is caving in on us. And please--
Sir, okay, this is like your third outburst. Will you please, or, or go out into the hallway, please? Just please, go, please. Continue on, Counselor Hirschfeld.
Anyway, I believe it's a right for women to have the right to choose what happens to their body and not leave it up to President of the United States. So that's why I feel it's really important for us to look beyond Greenfield because whether we like it or not, the rest of the world is, has an effect on Greenfield. So that's why I'm voting yes.
So, Counselor Dolan, I will come back to you now. No other questions or comments? Oh, Counselor Sun, did you want to speak?
Yes. I just want to-- Does, does a baby have any rights? Does some, some young kid have any rights? Does, you know, because a life is one month, there's a baby in the womb. Because a life is, one month, there's a baby in the womb. Now, if women don't want to have babies, they can go to a doctor and make it so they And they don't have to have an abortion. And I look at it this way. I'm glad my mother didn't abort me, and I'm glad anybody else's mother didn't abort them. And that's throughout here and the whole audience, because if they had, we wouldn't be sitting here. And just because some people don't care whether... And in fact, Roe versus Wade, the one that brought this forward, after she put this in as heaven it brought forward, she thought it was the worst thing that she ever did. And I'm just, you know, I can't vote for this. It's just, I can't vote for killing kids.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Sun. Counselor Gilmore, did you have your hand raised? No? Then it's okay.
I was just going to call the question, but I don't think it's necessary anymore.
Okay. All right, no more debate. Question's been called. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All in favor of resolution? Say aye.
Aye.
One, two. Abstain?
Can we have a show of hands for the yes, please?
Okay. Yes? Could we please have a show of hands for yes for the resolution?
I'm sorry. Six yes, three no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Counselor Mass.
Point of order, Madam President. I think the vote is six, which does not, is not a pa... I don't know on resolutions whether they require seven votes or not, or with simple majority.
As a point of order, I'm not convinced that we need seven votes. I think we just need a majority, and I would like for the parliamentarians to look into that, also concerning civil service and removing that from the charter. I would really like to know before we leave tonight.
I think you're right, but let me double check it.
Okay. Okay, we're taking a moment to look at it. Will everybody make sure their mics are off, please?
Can we recess for five minutes, pass some breakers?
Okay. Recession for five minutes. Shut your mics off, please. Okay, we are back now at 10:38. Okay. Before we move on to the next question, I would like to ask the council, I made an error tonight in my vote on the civil service, and I would like to ask if I could please change my vote to the affirmative, but it would have to be by the majority vote of the council to allow me that.
You want me to explain?
Please.
Okay. Penny has the right, Penny has the right to change her vote only with the unanimous consent of the body. And she feels that she was not...
Yeah.
That's what she said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It just got confusing for me.
And so if you would give her unanimous consent to change her vote, she will do so.
But it's up to you, no pressure. So does everyone understand what I'm asking? Okay, so...
So do you need a motion?
Okay, hold on one second. Counselor Hirschfeld?
Could you use hands, show the hands instead of voice? Sure. Put a motion with the order.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made, and seconded. Do you have a question?
I do.
Counselor Mass.
What would the effect on the determination of the vote be?
Wait.
Would it affect...
Sorry, this can't be debated.
It's non-debatable?
Non-debatable.
Okay.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Can we have a show of hands, please?
Oh, sorry.
It's not unanimous.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, so let's move on. Let's see, it is Counselor Hirschfeld.
Thank you. The city council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council approves the attached resolution titled "Resolution Regarding President Donald J. Trump." Be resolved that the City Council of Greenfield, Massachusetts, has determined that Donald John Trump, the President of the United States, has undermined the integrity of his office with impunity, has brought dispute of the office of president, has betrayed his trust as president to the manifest injury of the American people, and is unfit to be president. Therefore, he warrants impeachment. Therefore, the President of this council is hereby authorized and instructed to notify Congressman James P. McGovern of this council's determination there is sufficient and credible reasons and evidence to impeach Donald John Trump, and requests Congressman McGovern to communicate this resolution to Speaker Nancy Pelosi and Chair Gerard Nadar within...
Fourth with. Second.
Okay. Do I have a motion to table?
Second.
We have any second?
Just a second.
Okay, discussion?
Madam Chairman, there was a negative recommendation, three noes and one abstention.
Counselor Mass.
While I'm somewhat thinking a lot about the last resolution, when I look at this one, I feel a little bit differently because I'm pretty sure everyone in Greenfield knows how I have felt on these issues. I don't think there's anyone who campaigned further against Mr. Trump when he was running for president. I actually booked a van to try to go to the caucus to vote against him in the Republican Convention. But, and everyone knows what my political affiliations are, but as I look at this resolution, it's just patently false, insofar as even if this council were to find that the President undermined the integrity of his office with impunity, fine, believe that. That he has brought disrepute, repute upon the office of the President, fine, believe that. That he has betrayed the trust of the President to the manifest injury of the American people, fine, believe that. And is unfit to be president, fine, believe all of that. It says wherefore he warrants impeachment, and that the council has made a determination that there are sufficient and credible reasons and evidence to impeach. Constitution only allows impeachment for high crimes and misdemeanors, none of which are outlined in this resolution. I believe we must defeat this motion, and I move to call a question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
No.
Okay. So it fails. It passed, I'm sorry.
We need a vote on the name.
Okay.
I think...
Okay, so we vote for it? So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Okay.
Abstentions.
Do you want a roll call?
I want some hands, because I don't know who voted what.
Okay, so let's just do roll call.
Point of information, are you just proposing to bait on this?
Yep, that's where the call and question...
That's what you're asking, for closing the bait on it?
It already happened.
It happened.
I tried to do it earlier, but I just tried to do it.
Vern? Sorry, Counselor Sun.
No.
Counselor Burson.
Yes.
Counselor Alice.
No.
Counselor Pytham.
No.
Counselor Dolan.
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore.
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler.
Reluctantly, no.
Counselor Mayo.
Absolutely, yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld.
I'm going to abstain.
Counselor Mass.
No.
Vice President Ricketts, do you wish to vote? You don't have to.
My answer is no. I'm clear this time, I'm sorry.
One, two, three, four, six. Two, three, yes, six.
Okay, that fails. Okay. Page 50. Who does that one?
Can I say something?
Who's talking to me? Okay.
Personal privilege.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
I think if counselors who are going to make resolutions which are good, I think they really need to show up at committee meetings. It really kind of bothers me that, for whatever reason, they don't show... They make these resolutions, good or bad, and they don't show up, which leaves the chair hanging. The other thing is that if you're going to make a resolution that's going to stir up a lot of resentment, you really need to bring... You need to organize people to come here to stand up for your resolution. Otherwise, the rest of us just take the brunt of it, and I don't think that's fair.
Well, let me respond to that.
Okay, okay. Try to recognize me as chair, number one. So when you raise your hand, then I can call on you, but this is not a back and forth. We really should move on, okay? Can you guys talk about it as you walk to your car? Okay, so page 50. Who is this one? Does somebody want to read it for me? Anyone? All right, let me just find it, and I'll read it myself. I don't know who it belongs to, I'm sorry.
I move to approve the resolution to accept the Massachusetts Development Site readiness grant for the expansion of the I-91 Industrial Park, as written in the package.
Okay, second. Okay. Do we have any discussion on this? Counselor Wheeler, was that yours?
Yes.
I'm so very sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Vice President. I'm not sure this went to EDC. Normally, I would like to hear a report or someone from City Hall speak to it, but being that it is to accept a grant, I'm just going to vote for this.
Okay. Counselor Dolan, I'm sorry, I wasn't at the last EDC meeting, and we did not go over that. Okay, thank you. Does anyone else? Counselor Alice, you have some thoughts on this? Go ahead.
I did read it. I think I'm all for expanding the industrial park. It's something that we need to do. I think it would behoove the council to have a committee actually look at this. There is clawback features for the money if certain things don't happen. So I would just caution that maybe we should have a committee look at it, have some of the folks who worked hard to get this grant come in and talk about it, because it would be a shame to do it and then have to have the money clawed back for one reason or another that maybe we are not aware of. And I'm not saying that will happen, I'm saying that there is a feature in it to take the money back if certain steps aren't met, so...
Okay, so do I have a motion to table and bring to chairs?
I would make a motion that we refer this to committee.
Second.
Already been a motion.
Yeah.
I would throw my motion to table.
Maybe you made a second table. Or a motion. And did you second it?
I seconded it. I motioned to table.
There is a motion to table.
Yeah, there was a motion to table, and there is a motion.
I didn't realize you had accepted the motion at table, because you had pointed at me, so if... Whatever you want to do.
Okay. All right. All in favor of tabling this? Say aye.
Aye.
I withdrew that.
You withdrew it?
I did withdraw.
And you withdrew your second?
Yes.
Counselor Alice, take it away.
Then I make a motion to refer this to committee.
Second.
All in favor of referring it to...
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Counselor Gilmore, 53?
Yes.
Thank you.
The city council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursues a Charter Section 2-10, except the following appointment by the mayor to the council on aging Peg White Solnier for a three-year term to expire December 31, 2022.
Second.
This was unanimous positive.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, passes. Page 56, and this did not go to appointments and ordinances, I don't believe, so... Does anyone want to read this? Counselor Gilmore?
I can do it.
Okay.
Oh. Okay. Tell me when to stop.
Oh, wait, how much is it? Let me see.
The city... Am I reading both pages?
Part as written in the package.
Just do the...
Just that part, as written in the package.
The city council moved that it be ordered that the City Council of Greenfield hereby initiates the following zone change in accordance with MGL 40A, Section 5, amend the zoning, ordinance, schedule of uses, Chapter 200 as follows, and then as written in the packet.
Second.
Second. Do we have any discussion? Counselor Alice, then Counselor Wheeler.
Mass.
Oh, did I say?
What did I say?
You said Alice.
Oh, because I was looking at him. Counselor Mass, then Wheeler.
Move to refer to committee.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion made to refer this to committee. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
One no. Okay, so this will go to committee. All right. Okay, where am I?
Madam Vice Chair.
Counselor Mass.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Wait, wait, do we have a second? Wait, second reading? Did we do that? No, we didn't.
We never heard the no vote.
Okay. Okay.
It's wrong. Take a roll call vote.
Okay, for adjournment?
Ask for a roll call vote.
For adjournment?
Yes.
Okay, so we had a motion to adjourn, it was second. Can I have a roll call vote on the adjournment? Yes means you, you know, go. No means you want to stay.
Counselor Sun.
Yes.
Counselor Burson.
No.
Counselor Alice.
No.
Counselor Pytham.
No.
Counselor Dolan.
No.
Counselor Gilmore.
No.
Counselor Wheeler.
No.
We never heard the no vote.
Okay. Okay.
It's wrong. Take a roll call vote.
Okay, for adjournment?
Ask for a roll call vote.
For adjournment?
Yes.
Okay, so we had a motion to adjourn, it was second. Can I have a roll call vote on the adjournment? Yes means you, you know, go. No means you wanna stay.
Counselor Sun.
Yes.
Counselor Burson.
No.
Counselor Alice.
No.
Counselor Pythram.
No.
Counselor Dolan.
No.
Counselor Gilmore.
No.
Counselor Wheeler.
No.
Counselor Mayo.
No.
Counselor Hirschfeld.
No.
Counselor Mass.
Yes.
Okay, the meeting is not adjourned. Okay, so, page 99. Would somebody read that for me, please? Or...let me see if I can find it faster. Okay, so this individual petition was received by the City Council. To the Greenfield City Council, it's hereby petitioned to submit to the voters of Greenfield on its own motion, pursue it to Section 7-10 of the Charter, a question on the November ballot regarding whether or not to rescind the voting...zoning votes taken by said council on March 20, 2019, which removed 162 acres of private land from the French King overlay district and tripled the thresholds that would trigger the city's major development review process.
Second.
Second. So I have second...
Point of order.
Counselor Mass.
Madam President, I believe that there was a second, but I didn't hear a motion. What's the motion?
I don't think he has a motion in this.
I'll make a motion to accept the petition.
As written?
As written in the package.
Okay, do I have a second? Second by Counselor Burson. Thank you, Counselor Mass. Is there any discussion on this? Counselor Gilmore, then Counselor Dolan.
So, we heard from a lot of our constituents during public comment today that people are concerned...there were a lot of people who supported this compromise when we were talking about getting a library. And I know that the people who wrote to me, the tenor of those emails tended towards, you know, "library, yes, zoning, fine." And after the library went to the... Or we decided that the library was gonna go to the ballot, people started writing to me, asking, you know, "so what happens to the rest of the compromise?" Because they felt like they had written these emails to us, encouraging us to support that. And then they felt like the rug had been pulled out from under them. And I think...we had a lot of people talk about it tonight. And I think other people have been getting emails. I know that I have been. And so I wanted to sort of talk about that and figure out, like, what's really in the best interest of our constituents, being that the deal is off now with half of it being on the ballot, and what do we do with the other half?
Counselor Dolan? Did you have your hand raised before that? Okay, does anyone else have anything to say? Counselor Pythram?
Yes, I think that, you know, we've honored a petition with 350 signatures to put this...on the...oh, on the library, the library part of it. We honored that, we honored the signatures, we honored what the constituents did, the taxpayers did. They spent countless hours to get signatures to follow the rule...you know, the charter. And to me, to just bypass that, to put something on a ballot that we don't even have signatures for, like we have already collected and affirmed, to go on the ballot. To me, that is not fair. It would be a slap in the face to the people that did the time and collected the signatures. So I would not support this at all unless we had signatures to put on the ballot.
This time Counselor Dolan? Okay, and then Counselor Mass after that.
I would make a motion to put this on the ballot as a non-binding referendum in November.
Point of order. Yes, Counselor Mass.
There is...I believe there's already a motion on the floor to accept. Didn't we vote on that? No, we have not.
Thank you. Counselor Mass, were you gonna speak before he said that?
No.
Okay, I thought you had your hand up.
Point of order?
Yeah.
Just briefly, when we say "accept," all we mean is that the council agrees to consider the petition, correct? We're not accepting the provisions of the petition. We are just putting it up for discussion. Okay.
Okay, would anybody else like to discuss this? Oh, Counselor Burson.
I totally appreciate and respect the idea that the folks who are against the library went out and got their 360-odd signatures and this wasn't accomplished in connection with that. Irrespective of that, to me, this is a greater question. Because we heard, time after time after time, that there were many, many people who accepted this compromise, which the council agreed to and we respected each other's pledge in connection with what we were doing. Because frankly, personally, I didn't wanna lose the $10 million in connection with the library without getting into all the other manifestations of it that followed. Be that as it may, at the end of the day, it seems to be that representative government here is definitely a challenge. So we have to find a way to enable the people who challenged our decision in connection with the library to be on the ballot. But on the same token, we have to...we have to respect many, many, many voters who accepted this compromise. But from their body language and their statements, they didn't particularly like it and they were using words such as hostage. So I, for one, want this issue of the library before the voters and I want this issue of the zoning overlay before the voters. And if we don't do that, we're really doing a disservice to the voters by not allowing them to make their choice. Because they're obviously not respecting our decision. So if there's any way that we can get this individual petition on the ballot, we should do so. And if that means that the individual petitioner has to seek another 100 signatures in order to accomplish this, but I wanna find a way not to disenfranchise this entire group of people who wanna be heard one way or the other on this measure. It's too important just to procedurally kill it.
Counselor Mass.
People talk about respecting the will of the voters who collected the signatures on the library and respecting the work of the people who did the signatures on the Safe City, which is also going on the ballot. This group of people, a group of 10 people who filed initially a petition, asking for it to be on the ballot, could not do what the other two groups did, collect the amount that's prescribed by Charter that was adopted by this council in the timeframe that was necessary. They didn't do that. So now they're submitting one signature, asking that we unilaterally do that. They have not gotten 100 signatures, which would force us to take action. They haven't gone out and gotten the rest of the signatures and say, "See, if we knew what we were doing, we could've done it." They put nothing before us. They put zero effort in. It is incredible that we're being asked to do this. And I don't think that the compromise is off the table. The voters are gonna vote in November and I anticipate that the library's gonna pass. And I want this compromise to stick, the library and the zone change. And the reason for it is, the development that will take place in the French King overlay district, or which we hope will take place there, and the development that will take place throughout our entire community as part of the loosening of the restrictions on major development review, will create growth that will produce the tax revenue that will make it affordable to pay for the ultimate payments for a library and a fire department. I think it is egregious to tell people that "you did lots of work and killed yourself to get these questions on the ballot, but Al Norman is special. And because he's special, if he submits one signature or 10 signatures, we're gonna give him whatever he wants." I think that's outrageous and I don't think we should be doing it. But I think we do need to accept the petition. It's what's required of us by the Charter, just as it was required of us by the Charter to put the other petitions onto the ballot, whether we liked it or not. We had to. And so we have to accept this. And I call the question, ask that we accept.
Okay. Okay, so calling a question has a second. So, all in favor of accepting...sorry, go ahead. Okay, want to do a roll call? Okay, a roll call vote to accept this question? Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, you guys. I told you, I'm having a really bad night, I'm so sorry. Okay, a roll call on...calling the question?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, nobody opposed? Okay, question's been called. Yep, a roll call to accept the question.
Counselor Sun.
Abstain.
Abstain, okay.
Counselor Burson.
Yes.
Counselor Alice.
Yes.
Counselor Pythram. Counselor Dolan.
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore.
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler.
Yes.
Counselor Mayo.
No.
Counselor Hirschfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Mass.
Yes.
So the Vice President would like to vote?
Yes, no. And Counselor Sun, we'll go back to you.
Did Counselor Sun...did you abstain?
Yes.
It was an abstain, okay. Okay, so the petition is accepted and... We'll bring it forward at the chair, is right. All right. Do we have another motion here? I need to be... Counselor Dolan?
I understand everyone's concerns. I also agree that the group in question did not do the work necessary to compel us to do this. However, I am quite curious what the public will say about this French King zoning. So I will make a motion to put a non-binding resolution on the ballot in November, posing this question to the voters.
Counselor Mass.
I have no wording before me of the question that's gonna go onto the ballot. I have no idea what it's gonna look like. Our rules of order, our rules of procedure do not allow an item to be passed in all of its forms in a single meeting if a counselor objects and two other counselors object. At this time, I would object and ask for the council president to ask if there are any other objections.
Okay, yes. Are there any other objections? Counselor Pythram?
Yes. Object.
Okay, Counselor Alice. Okay. So we have two objections, three objections. Okay, since we do have...let me read it. Okay. "If three members object to taking a vote, it shall be postponed until the next regular or special meeting of the City Council." Okay. Okay, so we will take this up at our next meeting. City Council meeting. Okay. Okay, that's it, I just want... Oh, yes, you have a first reading, Counselor...
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Let me just find the page.
Take your time.
Point of order in the meantime.
103.
Point of order.
I'm sorry, Counselor Dolan?
I do have motions to reconsider, so I hope we will not skip that part of the meeting.
You have motion, okay. As soon as he reads that, then I'll come back to you. Thank you.
City Council First Reading, September 18, 2019. $1,300 be appropriated from the stabilization fund to fund retroactive wage provisions of a new contract of the Greenfield Superior Officers Association, Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 50 Supervisors, Police Union.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Dolan?
I would move to reconsider two motions, 10, 4, regarding public safety commission.
Let's do one at a time.
Okay.
I'm doing the best I can, okay? So, 10, 4.
So that would be regarding civil service.
Okay. We got a second, okay. Okay, so the motions back on the table, reconsider. Hold on, let's get fresh paper here. Okay, page 17 for folks. So, motion to be considered, it's been seconded. Is there any...it's non-debatable?
Non-debatable.
Okay, so we discuss it, please? Okay, a vote to reconsider?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Oh, not debatable, okay, that's right. Okay, any discussion? Counselor Dolan?
I would make a further amendment that we accept the new language suggested by Attorney Quinn.
Second.
Okay. Second, Counselor Mass.
Point of information?
Yes.
I thought that when we reconsidered our motion, we had to reconsider it in the form in which we took it up to begin with, is that true?
Could be.
Okay. Hold on one second.
Hold on just a minute.
Once it's reconsidered, it's open for debate again. If you've moved to reconsider, then you've opened the question again.
I would accept that as a friendly amendment. I was the one who made the original motion.
Okay. All right, so are we ready to call the question on this? Okay. Okay, so, all in favor, no, go ahead, you want to speak to it?
No.
Are you talking to me, or you're just, I don't know?
I was just, every other time we've done a motion for reconsideration, while it hasn't been on the same night, we were told we could not change the form of the question, and we couldn't add amendments to it. So that's, is it because it's tonight, or have we just been doing it wrong?
Let me double check on this.
Yeah, yeah, and let me just check, because I think it was part of the packet, but it didn't get.
We make sure that your parliamentarian isn't off the wall on this.
Basically, the purpose of a reconsideration is to permit correction of a hasty or ill-conceived vote, or to take into account new information that has come to light since the vote was originally taken. So I interpret that as saying, yes, you can have a friendly amendment that adds that information that Attorney Quinn provided.
Thank you, and is that for every motion, I'm sorry?
As far as I can tell, it is.
Okay, so in the past, when we have not allowed that to happen, we were in error, I just want to...
I would assume so.
Okay, thank you.
Unless, unless you can have policies that supersede Robert's Rules of Order, and if this body deemed it appropriate, you could put into your rules of procedure...
I appreciate that ruling, I don't need any further instruction, I just wanted to make sure that we were not breaking our rules. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it always happened the next day, or something, so this is the first time it's happened the same evening, but it is almost the next day, so, okay. All right, so clarification of what the friendly amendment you're making to the civil service? Is it just the information that was in the packet, that? Okay, is everyone clear on that? Okay, so, all in favor? Okay. A roll call vote, please, sorry. We have to bring much more, more paper next time.
Counselor Sun?
No.
Counselor Burson?
Yes.
Counselor Alice? Counselor Pytham? Counselor Dolan? Counselor Gilmore? Counselor Wheeler? Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Mass?
Yes. Okay, that pass. And Counselor Dolan, you had one more?
I'd like to make a second motion to reconsider that we reconsider point 10-11 about the zoning. I think that was definitely made, a decision made in haste, that is to initiate the proposed zoning amendment, which would direct it to committee by default, so referring it to committee, I don't believe was the correct move.
You're saying it should not be referred to committee?
We should vote to initiate it.
Correct. Counselor Wheeler? With your mic. Okay, so...
So my motion stands.
Okay, so we have a motion to reconsider. Any discussion?
It's non-debatable.
Oh, non-debatable, okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. See, then everybody, four.
Four people voted no.
Could everybody raise their hand if it's no, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Mass, do you have a question? Discussion, okay, go ahead, and then Counselor Wheeler, you're after.
Counselor Dolan is partially correct, a motion to initiate will send something ultimately to...
Will send something ultimately to committee, however, once the council initiates, no substantive changes can be made without restarting the entire process and the entire clock, so historically, what we have done is send items to committee to have at least an initial look over, to make sure that there's no substantive changes that want to be made prior to coming to the full council for initiation and officially starting the clock. Certainly, we could vote to initiate this tonight, I haven't reviewed it, I don't know if there are substantive changes I would propose, but generally, this is something that came from the planning board, I don't anticipate that we're going to have major substantive proposals, but because zoning does require two-thirds, it probably is a good idea to make sure there are no obvious roadblocks before we initiate.
Okay, and Counselor Wheeler?
Thank you, Counselor Dolan, for reconsidering this, and thank you, my fellow counselors, for reconsidering this, I thought it was hasty to do so without discussion. I support a lot of the things in this, and in fact, there was discussion at committee chairs about initiating this, but I am actually perfectly in agreement with Counselor Mass here, I may actually in fact have substantive changes that I would like to at least bring up in committee, so I will in fact vote, I think, the way that we previously did, but I appreciate the opportunity to reconsider.
I also believe this is, okay, so you're talking about it going to EDC for discussion, and then we will have a joint meeting with the planning board, so what we're discussing tonight is when we're actually starting the clock, am I correct? Counselor Mass, thank you. Is there any other discussion on this? Counselor Mass?
Just to be clear, the motion that's before us still is the motion to refer to committee, so a yes vote is to refer to committee, a no vote is to continue debate.
All right, a motion to send it to committee, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we'll send it to EDC.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, before everybody does, one more thing, I just want to thank my colleagues for their patience, this was difficult for me tonight, I just thank you so much, and thank you for all the extra hands and eyes, okay? Thank you.